I drove up there because I was like, I don't know if it's still open.
No, don't have any vacations planned.
It was a, it was a cone maze for a couple of days.
Um, kind of working ahead. We're doing a huge project in our house, like, starting in the spring, as in taking the entire roof off.
Thank you. Maybe they're not gonna mess with that.
Had a height that did, we're doing tinted ceilings, but the rest of the house right now is not complete. So we're having to take the roof off every year after, so make it all shorter. It's a huge project. They say it's gonna take a year, but I think that'd be done in six months.
Very. You mind me, sir? Thank you. I always forget until about ten seconds before I need to ask it.
So, we'll see. That's the biggest thing I got. Tomorrow, I'm hoping to go down to the lake. I'm moving landscape walk when we did our septic system down there about seven, eight years ago. It looked like two huge casket things in our yard.
Alright, I'll go ahead and call our Tuesday, October fourteenth council meeting to order. If you would please join us and rise for our prayer and the pledge.
Just by your heads, okay. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you've given us. Lord, we thank you for this community, for the beautiful weather that we've had in it lately, and Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity that we each have to be a part of it. Lord, we thank you for being with each of us as we travel here this evening. We just ask that you be with the council members tonight as they study and make decisions, and we just ask that you give them the wisdom and the discernment that you have them to have, so that they can make decisions that move our community forward. Lord, we just ask that you provide a special blessing to the council members who volunteer, to our employees and our citizens who all work to contribute each and every day, every day for the betterment of this community. Lord, we just ask that you be with each of us as we travel home this evening and just help us to return safely to our families. Lead us and guide us and forgive us where we've been. We say all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How do I do, man? I'm good. You? Good. Thank you. Alright, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Pro Tim Lewis.
Here.
Councilwoman Hosslinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Fettig.
Here.
Councilman Blades, you have a call.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blades walks in the door.
We'll move on to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each citizen is limited to three minutes, and the council will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of city business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Shannon Walker.
Good evening, Council. Shannon Walker, Director of the Aurora Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you to the city for being a great partner for the car show. Um, the street department, the park department, Carrie, it all went off without a hitch. We did have a hundred and three vehicles. And Carrie actually did our announcements for us this year and read off all of our windows. She walked it right along. It was wonderful. So, also that day, we presented Kelly and Mary Jo Johnston with a Good Neighbor Award. So, they've gotten one. Just a little update on those. They've received one of our certificates locally. Daryl Hastings, um, who was probably our first, first or second, I can't remember if he was our first one. Anyway, um, because we were able to get his nomination in, he actually has made it to the state level. So, instead of choosing, normally they choose ten, but there were so many wonderful, um, recipients for this nominations, um, they upped it to fifteen. So, Daryl is one of the top fifteen in the state of Missouri who showed being a good neighbor. And then because Youth Empowerment and the Aurora Alumni Center also partnered with us, we have asked him to be our grand marshal for our Christmas parade. So, he's all excited, and I'm gonna tell you, if you, if you have a few minutes and you see him, even if you don't see him outside, go knock on his door and visit with him. He's an amazing gentleman. Um, but we've also given one to the Heritage Harmony House. Heritage Harmony House, Kelly Johnston, Kelly and Mary Jo, Daryl, I feel like I'm, oh, and Sabra and Jeremiah Durham. They were actually nominated by one of their neighbors because of the help that they give her. She lives alone, and they take stuff over to her and really try to help. So, thank you also for the Good Neighbor proclamation because we're recognized, being able to recognize people in our community. And if you guys have anyone that we can go and present one of our certificates to, and then when it reopens in the spring for us to put our nominations in, we'll put them in also. So, don't forget to give your Good Neighbor a shout out positively. So, anyway, but thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, having no further public comment, we'll move into council forum. Mr. Pro Tim.
Yeah, so had a car show, uh, great, beautiful weather, great job Shannon with that, and everybody else. Um, planning zoning, um, meeting, I think that's, that's it for me.
Great. Somebody up there.
Okay.
Do you have any?
Uh, strategic planning.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Worked the car show, go ahead. Do you have one more?
Nope, I was just, I was just saying, I forgot that.
Hospital board meeting. I did go to the fish and chip benefit down at the fire department. That was a lot of fun. Attended Kelly and Mary Jo Johnson, and don't forget, October thirty first is Spooktacular right downtown here in Aurora.
I also went to, to the strategic planning meeting we had here, which I thought was really great. Uh, attended the planning and zoning, uh, meeting, which is on our agenda this evening. And then, um, I attended today the Southwest Board of Solid Waste, and as a result of that, on the back table, if I haven't reached out to you all already, there's a survey that they'd like for you to complete. And before I walked into this room, only one person Lawrence County had figured, filled it out. I'll let you guess who that was. But, um, but the result of that survey, there's very few questions on there, maybe like five or six questions, but it basically wants to know, are you a recycler, recycler? Do you know where the places are to recycle? What things do you feel like we're missing that we need to recycle? Amazingly enough, one of the big things that they're getting answers back from the other counties are tires. It's hard for people to get rid of tires. So, and just a little blip again, that place on South Thirty Nine costs like two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for DNR to get that cleaned up. So, anyway, tires is a big deal. Um, let's see, we are looking at, we're talking about doing some recycling here in Aurora, which we hope will have maybe some announcements coming up. But, uh, one thing too with, um, they report like the landfill, like how much tonnage is deposited, like every quarter, whatever. I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but.
Yeah. It was my team's message. I apologize. It popped up on the screen.
Okay. Well, anyway, the landfill tonnage has really gone up, and so there's a concern that we're not doing enough recycling, and somebody's idea on trying to get people recycling is really jacking up the, uh, landfill fees. So, people will want to recycle instead of paying for the landfill fees. Anyway, a good thing for us is that the grant cycle is open. So, if Aurora chooses to go to that route, we can apply for a grant to get some assistance for that. So, anyway, um, so we'll see. That's my report.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Blades?
I also attended the car show and the strategic planning session.
Alright, uh, strategic planning session, car show, and I got lucky enough to be there right whenever Kelly and Mary got their, uh, awards. That was, that was a great time, and, and couldn't be a better recipient. I mean, they, they really espoused that, uh, award. Um, also just learned that Rick Batson passed away today. He was former police chief and I think interim city manager for a moment. So, sorry to hear that. I don't know if we know details about services or anything yet, so wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Outside of that, quiet week, we do have a park board meeting come up this week. We don't know if we have a quorum yet. We'll hope we do, so. Alright, moving on to consent agenda. This will be for the approval minutes for the city council regular session minutes on September twenty-third, the work session minutes on October eighth, and September and October twenty twenty-five appropriations.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion fast.
Thank you. Old business, seven dot one, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-five, animal microchipping fees. Council, any further comments or questions about this one? I will make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-five, animal microchipping fees.
Second.
Uh, motion a second, please vote.
Motion fast.
Thank you. Seven dot two, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-six, amending section two-ten dot two-ten. Any further questions or comments, Council? On this one?
I'll make a motion. We approve the second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-six, amending section two-ten dot two-ten.
I'll second.
Uh, motion a second, please vote.
Motion fast.
Seven dot three, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-seven, amending section two-ten dot one-three-zero.
I'll make a motion. We approve second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-seven, amending section two-ten dot one-three-zero.
I'll second that.
With a motion a second, please vote.
Motion fast.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to new business, eight dot one, discussion city flag. It's on the agenda this time. So.
Hello, Council.
Hello.
Um, did we get the flag approved or declined?
So, what I think, did you have a chance to discuss for the potentially putting together committee?
Committee?
Yeah, you, you guys had talked about that a little bit, because it, and that's kind of, I, I like that idea because I'm glad you brought the conversation up and got the process started. I think there's a lot of people that would love to be a part of this process and maybe have their own, uh, spin on some things as well. Uh, especially when we have to take into context everybody in town. It's gonna be the flag for Aurora, right? So, it's for everybody. Are you opposed to being a part of something like that?
I would love to be a part of this.
Okay. The part that I don't, so Council, how do we, we need some ideas on how to form that and how we go about that. You know, being diplomatic and choosing that group and figuring out how we wanna line that up. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Um, we could, we could just throw it out to the wild and see if, I don't wanna call them applications, but see who has interest.
Like a city post kind of thing?
Yeah, and, you know, if there's a lot, then we can weed it down from there or decide, decide how we wanna do that. But my only concern with, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd like, like to do it. My only concern is timing and making sure we don't overload Carrie with all the other stuff we just talked about during our strategic planning meeting. Uh, so we gave her a pretty long list of, of wants and needs, but, um, I'm not opposed to.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to doing, doing that and helping be on that committee, and we'll just, if you guys will do that, we'll plan a meeting and get four, five of us together, and you young sir, and we'll maybe just clean it up a little bit, look beautiful, and maybe the fonts and different things like that.
Is there a date for the committee meeting?
So, just this second, I said I'd help you do that. So, we'll get together and Carrie will give me your information, and we'll get together and maybe go down to Winston's and have a discussion and have a burger. How about that?
Okay.
Alright.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I'll keep in contact.
Thank you.
So, Council, this is a presentation. You want us to make a public vote, seeking people?
Garner interest, yep, yep. And thank you for taking the lead on that. I'm certainly not the person for aesthetic items, as everybody knows, so. Alright, eight dot two, discussion on vacant commercial building registration and inspection.
Council, this has been a joint effort. Um, so, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to Chairman Pro Tim Lewis, who did a lot of research, knowing that this is something I've been on my list for a long time that I hadn't gotten to. He did extensive research and actually sent us, um, a draft ordinance that I went through and made a lot of changes to. So, um, now what you have before you is a draft ordinance for discussion tonight that includes Aaron's draft, my draft, and Chairman Pro Tim Lewis's draft. So, really, I took the three of our thought processes, the three of us that all drafted some initial verbiage, and I combined them. Um, and what you have before you tonight is kind of a compilation of all three. Um, so the, Aaron's gonna, I think, share this conversation a little bit tonight. Um, but we're basically looking for us to be, uh, I, I, I said to Justin's starting point, but I think maybe we're a little further than the starting point, because I feel like we have some really good votes in this. But I fully expected this to be our initial conversation for you guys to have some changes you might wanna make, or questions that you have for us, and that kind of thing. So, really, it's before you tonight for, this is where we're at, and now we're ready for your feedback to see what you'd like us to change as we move forward. Um, Aaron had worked on his draft. It includes both commercial and residential. Um, but we feel like that residential program needs to be detailed on its own accord, um, rather than piled into one, uh, code section. We think maybe a second, a separate chapter is good for that. So, as I had mentioned to you in the strategic planning session, I expect that to come here in the near future, um, rather than in combination of this. Um, so that's kind of where we are. Aaron, you wanna add anything or just let them share feedback and thoughts?
No, I mean, I think you pretty much covered it as far as, it's pretty cut, I mean, it's pretty cutthroat, as far as what, what we're wanting as a city to kind of move forward on, you know, the buildings that we do have that we already know we have problems with, so.
Well, go ahead and let you guys lead it off.
I, I have a, something I'd like to add is if we have a building, obviously, that's empty, I'd like to see a piece of paper on the front window, an official paper, that says who owns this building and how to contact them. Because I think sometimes people with, they have a building, they don't know what to do with, and they're stuck. So, you know, maybe we'll get lucky and somebody will be walking downtown, say, oh, that building's just two doors down from, you know, Winston's. I'd love to have that place, you know. It just might help.
And that is not something we specifically put in the ordinance. I completely agree. I think it's a good idea. I will say ADP, uh, has been working with all of those vacant buildings down there and starting to do, ADP is wanting to fund signage like that in each of the buildings as long as they can get authorization. This would, if you added that to your ordinance, would allow us to just do that. Um, but ADP is a partner, or willing to be a partner in helping make sure that that signage is in those buildings.
Okay.
And that's more geared towards like, uh, for sale, twenty-two hundred square feet, has more kind of like a one sheet, almost as like to entice, right? Is that, is that what they're talking about?
Yeah, so they're, yes, initially, one of their first thought processes was let's advertise what's there, but also I think just there is so much conversation about whose is it, and what are they doing with it, and that kind of thing. So, could be a twofold thing, but if you wanna do something separately that is actually a city document that would be required to be placed in it or something like that, that would be a good thing.
It might make an impact. You know, if, hey, say, if I had an empty building and I, if people knew that I owned it, I would sure wanna make sure that the front of it is well taken care of, if nothing else, just paper on the windows or, or something. So, it might make an incentive for somebody to maintain it at least on the outside to make it look better.
My way.
It's not gonna hurt, is it?
I don't know, and I think that's, yeah, I, I don't know how many times we've walked around early on and wondered, I wonder who owns that. You know, you go to G I S, it's not exactly user friendly, and it doesn't give you contact information, but yeah, that would be.
And I think that would be my only pause. I would wanna check with legal counsel to ensure that we can legally require them to put contact info on it.
Yeah.
Um, because when we've talked about this conversation in, like with ADP or different avenues in the department, it had been that that person would give authorization. I would wanna ensure that we legally can do that. Would be the only thing I would add.
Yeah, what about, uh, just having some type of, we're obviously gonna have a record of, of what we've inspected, right? And maybe part of the inspection is, uh, are you willing to sell this, or do you want me, would you allow me to give information if a developer contacts us, would you like me to give? And they're, they're kind of checking a box, saying, yes, you can share information about the building if someone's showing interest in looking for property and kind of, maybe that starts the conversation. What their plan, what the building is, and that helps us all know what, what's, you know.
So, my question is, how does this transcend ownership? Or does it, you know, in terms of we're in the process, this person has, has hit these requirements, and now they're in the fee structure, and they sell it, and the next person doesn't start business in it? Did I miss a part in there, or is that something that's?
A new owner is required to register within ninety days of ownership, or thirty days of ownership.
So, they technically restart their clock, though?
Over your ninety, yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's my concern, right? Is, and, and is, I guess my only question would be, is there a way that we can prevent that legally, to where we're just not swapping properties to keep it, you know?
Um, prevent it, no, but in terms of if we get to where we have, so right now, where we changed code and processes in recent years was we've never recorded condemnation orders. So, at this point, if we have a property that we've ordered unoccupied or condemned or any of the emergency things in here, that documentation is recorded at the county, and then that, when somebody does a title search or they go to, you know, ownership is transferring, then that would now pop up, as where previously it did not. That would be the only way that I think we get a little bit of.
Yeah, so they know what they're buying into, but, but, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, it's a tough one. I mean, step in the right direction, so.
I had a question about the twenty-four hour response. I thought it was, to me, a little bit confusing how it was worded in there.
Can you remind me what section that is?
No, I can't remind you. Don't have it with me. I read it at home.
Wait just a second.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're okay.
It is page two, bottom B.
Yep.
Yep.
Responsible local contact agent within twenty-four hours phone, parcel, identification number.
Well, maybe because I took out a sentence and then didn't go back into it. Um, so I believe what we intended there was, shall I listen?
That's if, if you notify the local person, they have to respond within twenty-four hours.
Oh, no, yeah, it's, it's.
They're the contact person. If the person that does not own the building and there's a problem, that we needed somebody within at least fifty miles, that they're within that twenty-four hour range of getting there in case, that way the building collapses or nuisance, or if somebody's causing a problem on the properties, that we need somebody to be able to respond within that time frame.
Okay. I don't recall seeing fifty miles in there.
I took fifty mile out.
Okay.
Um, so what that was, was the form and content. So, they're required to complete the form on the city provided form, and they're required to provide a responsible local contact or agent with a twenty-four hour phone. So, basically.
But that's just a twenty-four hour phone that somebody could answer at twenty-four hours a day. To me, that doesn't mean that they have to respond to you. Do you see what I'm saying? I, I, I'll feel that's very, as clear as maybe it needs to be.
Yeah, and that was for content. Aaron, isn't that addressed in two sections? Give me a second here.
Sorry, Carrie.
No, you're okay. I shouldn't know the answer. I just. I was thinking we had that in two separate sections, one in where it was just information that had to be on the form, and then a separate section where we addressed that their person had to be contactable and responsive. If not, we can fix that.
Okay.
We may, in our putting it together, we may have scratched it out here to be honest with you. I know that was our intent.
It was in mine. No, just kidding. I don't remember.
And, and, and there anywhere, Carrie, is there anything that we, they have to provide insurance, proof of insurance?
That is something that was discussed to be added after it hit your agenda. So, that is being added.
That was my only thing, yeah.
That was my next point.
Well, thank goodness I got one in.
That's right. And I was gonna say, with that in mind, with the insurance, I think they need to provide insurance, just like when you're trying to retitle your car or license your car. But I'm almost wondering if we need to do, if we could write to do spot checks to make sure they kept insurance, because just like somebody, you know, licensing their car, they could have it insurance one day, the next day they could cancel it.
I think we could write this to where the city would be required to be an additional insured on their policy, and if at any time it was canceling, we would receive notice from the insurance company.
Okay.
So, that might be the route that I would recommend on that.
I didn't realize that. Okay.
If you're additional insured, you get notifications.
I didn't know that. Okay.
Mailtime would be involved, but we could receive that notification on contract.
Okay, okay. Sounds like we're headed in the right direction.
You have the, uh, fee highlighted on here, so I assume we need to come up with an idea of what we want?
Yeah, um, real quick, can I ask a question about one of the things we were just talking about? On the twenty-four hour contact, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what you'd like that to entail. So, you were saying you want that to be that they're required to respond or be on the property within a certain amount of time? How do you want that to be specifically?
I don't know. If you get, get them on the property, but it would be nice if they respond.
I think that's the reason why, you know, they're supposed to be close, is to, to get them here.
Well, I mean, currently active owners aren't required to respond either, so I don't know, you know. In what kind of situation are we thinking here? Like, you're talking about public safety issue, like immediate, yep.
A building gonna collapse.
Or, or two, with research and everything that looking up was, with that response was if, let's say we've got retail business on the bottom, and then there's, they've rented out the top, and there's nothing but nuisance up there because they've rented that apartment out for a weekend. Then if people are driving, complaining to the police department, then the person that owns that building, their response time is to get there and either get the people out of the building or, you, you know, get the problem mediated.
Do we have a lot of people that are living states away without a property manager or some sort of?
Specific to downtown or citywide?
I guess, I guess I'm, my mind's been, been operating in the downtown area, but.
I wouldn't say so much in the downtown, but citywide, yeah. We have a lot of nuisance violation notices that go to people out of state that don't have a proper management.
Gotcha. Okay. But part of this is being solved by us gaining entry, right?
Correct.
So.
And being a little bit ahead of that curve, for lack of a better term.
Yeah.
We're hoping that once we get the worst in shape improved, then this is an annual inspection that keeps us from getting to the point that we're at right now.
Trying to find someone to let us, yeah, to work with. But I don't care either way.
Okay. We'll add some verbiage about responding within twenty-four hours.
I'm just thinking of a building downtown that has a bunch of tin on it, that if we have high winds and there's a big twelve-foot thing of tin hanging down from up above, you know, we need to notify this local person and say, hey, you need to respond within twenty-four hours to get something addressed, or, or give us a pan, plan, yeah.
What you just described, that's happened before.
Okay.
And I know we have some, I guess my mind is like, we have, we know we have some, some trouble spots, but I also don't wanna make it such that we're penalizing, folks are just trying to have a normal, you know, operation and doing the right thing and, um, making it inconvenient. You know, twenty-four, if, maybe if, you know, I don't know what kind of leniency we can add if they're out of town, or, you know, maybe someone's on vacation. I don't know, just, um, I guess I don't wanna reach a point where penalizing people are trying to do the right thing and, you know, making it too strict. But I really don't. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I don't care either way.
I kind of feel like in a way we're going from nothing, I wanted to say nothing in place, but loose rules to really tightening it up, and I think we're gonna hear some negativities, some comments from people.
Sure.
And I would rather have it tighter now and loosen it up a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, that's my perspective.
No objection.
So, we'll put something in there on that.
Okay.
I apologize. So, then the question you asked was about the fees. So, if you go to section five fifty oh seven oh, that's the fees progressive schedule and use of funds. So, um, above the highlighted area is the schedule of annual fees. Those were fees that were, um, provided to me by Chairman Pro Tim Lewis. So, that's his starting point on your fees. And then the section that I've highlighted, um, it's said to be set by council in his draft, and so that was just payment late charges. Fees are due upon registration and renewal, um, and then late payments made for a monthly late charge of, with that saying to be set by council. I thought maybe he specifically wanted to talk about that, so we didn't put anything in there.
Okay.
Um, so that you guys could discuss your fee schedule as well as any of that that you wanted to.
Okay. What do other towns charge? Do we know what their rate is?
What I saw varied quite a bit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Like from ten percent to, you know, thirty-five, I think I saw one. What do we charge for other things, like payments? Business license, stuff like that, yeah.
Already know my answer. Um. Super penalties are.
I don't know what, like, ten or, ten or fifteen percent feels right, but I don't know why.
Yeah, so most of our penalties are set fees.
Like twenty-five dollars. It's not a percentage.
Yeah, or, yeah. Like three fifty or, yeah.
I think given the nature of the progressive change at. I think given the nature of the progressive change, a percentage makes sense, right?
Okay.
Personally.
But what, what's your base? What are you basing the percentage on?
Off that yearly fee, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if I had to write a number in there, I was at ten. Because it does slide, you know, as you go further down that path, which we don't want to happen, but that allows it to grow a little bit with that.
Ten percent sounds good. What do you think?
There you go, ten percent.
Okay.
What is your thoughts?
I'm good. Um, I, the only thing I wanna interject is Legal has not reviewed this yet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, I apologize. I didn't, I'm out of my teens. Um, Legal has not done a full review of this yet and so I wanna make sure that he says we're okay to charge whatever fees we have in there and with those penalties. I don't know of any issue we'll have there. And then just below that on the use of funds in section E, um, collective fees shall be deposited into a dedicated fund used exclusively for inspections, code enforcement, and administration related to this program. I need to check the legality of that too. Um, because a lot of times it would be a restricted fund if we earmark it for something specific. I need to make sure on our legalities and with our auditor. And I don't have final answers back on that yet from Legal or Auditor, but I've asked them.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I do know, like, these, the fees are, are to recover cost, right?
Right.
And the work, um, that you all will put into it.
Right.
Not a tax.
Yeah, right. Absolutely agree with it. I just want disclaimer that I have not gotten those answers yet and I want to before we pass it.
Okay.
Okay. So you'll take those changes, I guess you'll take those changes back and then hopefully we'll have an answer back from the two entities. Maybe have something next meeting.
Yeah, so my intent would be to make the changes that you've given me guidance on this evening. Have Legal sign off on it, have the under sign off on the financial side, and then have it on your next agenda for first reading.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay. That sounds good.
Any further on that, counsel?
Thanks, Carrie.
All right.
Mary.
Good, okay. Move on to eight dot three, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty sixty-two, hospital board appointment, Sarah Brown Olson.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty sixty-two for Sarah Brown Olson.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot four, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-eight, sunshine law amendment.
Counsel, this comes to us based off of statutory changes. Um, the General Assembly made several changes to the sunshine law in their latest legislative session and Lomber actually reached out to us and said, hey, it's that way. I need to get up to speed here. Um, and so the changes are all statutory. Uh, when they sent that to us, um, they indicated that many cities have adopted the language of that chapter verbatim. Um, and they needed to be getting up to date with current amendments. Uh, we've adopted ours in a way that in chap, in that way in chapter one twenty. What they're doing, uh, since that's out of date, is they prefer to more general approach, which adopts all of the closed sections of six ten dot oh two one, so we wouldn't have to update it regularly. Basically, we will just be in compliance with state statutes as it changes.
Oh, great. Great.
And we wouldn't have to amend our ordinance on a repeated basis. So that's what you have before you tonight. The changes that took place under this General Assembly, um, we're dealing with identification, individually identifiable information on minors and users of city parks. Um, so someone should go in previously and ask the city to provide the list of the names of all the twelve-year-olds playing soccer and any pictures they might have. This does not allow us to give that information out now. Um, and so it's just some protections on things like that. Judicial personnel, it allows, allows judicial personnel to have their information closed in terms of not being out on the city website or something like that, if they don't want it out there immediate. Um, and then just some payment of costs and expiration of requests in terms of sunshine requests. So, uh, state statute outlines how much we can charge for sunshine requests and how long we have to wait for someone to respond if we ask them questions. Um, so this is just kind of outlining some things that weren't clear, um, and updating some of those things in that statute. So that's primarily the things that we changed, but we will be adopting just the verbatim reading of that chapter now.
Okay.
All right. Any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five thirty-three fifty-eight, sunshine law amendment.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion, second. Please vote. Thank you. Eight dot five, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-eight, sunshine law amendment.
I'll make a motion that we approve, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-eight, sunshine law amendment.
Second?
Uh, motion, second. Please vote. Thank you. Eight dot six, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-nine, replat of seven twenty North Elliott Avenue.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here again tonight. Um, I do, tonight, we did have a planning and zoning commission meeting on last week and Seth and Amy Sykes have done a replat for seven twenty North Elliott. Um, in that, it is in a commercial zone, just so everybody knows, but in, with that comes this, that the way they split it was so that everything faces High Street because the sewer water and those things are out there instead of facing towards Elliott Street where it makes it a little more complicated. But that was part of the reason why they ended up splitting it the way they did to be able to hit the sewer and stuff like that and, and water and stuff for, for those lot splits. Um, planning and zoning did approve. And what I ask tonight is that you guys would also approve the lot, lot split for seven twenty North Elliott.
That name is still in this document?
They're presenting a corrected one.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. So they're, it's, it's in our office. Crystal got it all taken care of. Their names are now on everything, so that's no longer there.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-nine, replat of seven twenty North Elliott.
Second. No motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, eight dot seven, special event application, access family care fall festival.
Yeah, so just to clear, the next, the next three are on private property, just so everybody, just so everybody knows. Um, access family care, they, they did bring forth a special event to you guys. Uh, they do this, they've done this a few times. It's on ten twenty-four of this year. Their operating hours will be from four thirty to seven P M. Um, they will be having, uh, food trucks there and doing games and such. And they have, and I talked to, uh, Wes this morning in our management meeting and stuff like that, that they do have on there that, that the fire department and the police department have come the, the previous years to kind, kinda be there to kinda help out and stuff like that. So, uh, staff does recommend that you guys would approve the special event for access family care.
I'll make a motion that we accept the special event application for access family care fall festival.
Second?
Uh, motion, second. Please vote. Eight dot eight, special event application, Aurora Band Carnival.
Yep, so this event will be held on ten twenty-eight from five to eight, from five to eight o'clock. They will, uh, be cleaning up from about seven thirty is what it shows. Uh, the band carnival car bash, so that the fire department is involved in this one. Greg was not here this morning, but we have had conversations that they'll be bringing the car and, and making sure that all those things are taken care of as far as the, you know, the car being smashed and, and as far as cleaning up as well. Greg is gone, so I went over to the police department and talked and spoke with Harley just to make sure because they, they have asked this time, previous time they have done it in front of the school. This time they're asking that they do it be, behind the high school and everything, I guess, to, you know, so it's not out in public view, I'm assuming, but I don't know that. But, but it is for the, the Aurora Band boosters. And the fire department's pretty much, from what Greg has told me, they're pretty much supervising the enti, the entire thing for the, for the band. So staff does ask that, you know, recommends that we, approval for the special event.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we accept the special event application for the Aurora Band Carnival.
Second?
Uh, motion, second. Please vote. Eight dot nine, special event application, awaken trick or treat.
Yes, so in case everybody, I'm the pastor at Awaken Church, just so everybody knows. Probably shouldn't say that out loud, but I did. Just so everybody knows. It's my church. Um, this is the first time that the church has ever wanted to do anything. Not, not that they, it's already enough. Never mind, it's already known. I've already got another one there. Um, no, so the church has been growing over the past few years and we've, they're, they're wanting to expand. And so one of the things that, that they brought before me and the other pastor was they wanted to do a trunk or tree. So we've got, as of right now, the church has about ten cars signed up. We're expecting maybe fifteen that we're gonna do in the parking lot. Uh, our hours are gonna be from six to nine. I told Carrie this morning, I said, I'm hoping to push that we're done way before that, that we're out of candy. So, but ma, maybe not. She says I'm wrong. But anyhow, I might, I might be. But, um, we will be having music there, just so you know, but I've already told the church that we're gonna keep it because of the area that we're in, that we're gonna manage that the best we can. So the church does ask that you guys would approve this special event application as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve special event application, awaken trick or treat.
Second?
Uh, motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right, moving on to staff report, city manager report.
Counsel, as always, I have a few things I wanted to highlight for you tonight. Uh, the new pumper truck that we purchased for the fire department this year is officially in service and responding to calls. Everybody loves it. Um, I believe Greg is, he had visited with me about maybe having the truck up here before your next city council meeting, so that you guys could take a look and crawl around in it if you want to, maybe take a picture and that kinda thing.
Award-winning fire truck.
Yes, it is, in fact. It, it did win the award for the best fire truck at the car show. So, um, where, is that right? It was best fire truck, right?
It was.
Yeah, yeah. So our guys are very proud of that. And, but I will say, very proud of our guys. Um, they were there all day long, so police and fire were present the whole time and, um, really appreciate everybody being a part of that and just being willing to go have a good time at these events and get involved in the community. So I love that very much. Um, and thanks to Shannon for honoring their efforts there. Um, then I'm gonna jump to, uh, rec center. We'll be holding, hosting the Missouri Municipal League Regional Meeting there next week on October twenty-first. Um, they had eighty-six registrants as of yesterday, last I heard. Do we get a final count? Um, so we're very excited. Lots of people from the southwest region of M M L are gonna get to see Aurora and what we have to offer at our new facility, um, while we all learn together and, um, go through that process with M M L. Wastewater, the S R F project continues. The last D N R inspection was on October sixth and they passed with no issues there. Um, I just wanna brag on that department a little bit. Uh, Lance had to take a few days off last week, um, unexpectedly and, um, not the easiest thing that any of us have to go through that he's had to endure with the loss of his dad. Um, but he sat at our management team meeting this morning, thankful for everyone that was a part and said that his team carried some big issues last week and never called him. Um, that goes, that says so much for those guys that we've recently, um, J D that we promoted right underneath him to be his number two in line there, um, in that department. And they had some pretty stuff, that was some pretty significant issues that popped up last week. And, um, so I just wanna say I can't brag on that team enough and how well they work together, um, and how well Lance had them ready. Um, Aaron lends some support sometimes when he has to. They're still, um, but the teamwork's fantastic and they did a great job. So just wanna brag on them a little bit. Airport, we did have an airport board meeting on October second. And Lochner, our consultant engineer and design firm for the airport, is beginning design work for our twenty twenty-six airport project. There had been some conversation about trying to do the runway pavement rehabilitation as well as the lighting project, all in one, one project instead of two. There are not going to be enough funds there from federal highway to do both at the same time in twenty twenty-six. However, Lochner is telling me there are enough funds to design both. So it looks like that with this year's federal dollars that are available, we can design both, complete the rehabilitation of the runway and the asphalt project, and then we'll already be designed and ready to go in twenty twenty-seven for the lighting. So we're gonna try to go that direction. That's what I've asked them to do because we can kinda maximize what we get done in twenty twenty-six and be prepared for that next one. Community development and public facilities, the city hall rehabilitation project, contractor began staging materials today. I'm sure you noticed in our south employee parking lot, um, and construction is scheduled to begin on Monday of next week. The city has purchased pigeon feeders. Um, I'm excited about this and, uh, thank you Mayor Kennedy for the information that you shared with me. Um, we had researched this option, um, to some degree, but he sent us another company that I hadn't yet found. And this company has been very hands-on, very personable, willing to walk through every step of this with us and make sure that we are successful in this program. So, uh, the two pigeon feeders that we purchased have been delivered. They're in the building. And Aaron and, uh, Chris and the Parks Department are gonna partner together to get those put up. Um, I received approval and authorization from the Sumner's family, family to set one up behind their building down there in the one hundred block of South Madison. And then the other one will be down here on the south side of the downtown, uh, near the Creamery Lot over here. Um, we're excited about that. So those feeders will be installed and they will be feeding, uh, OVO Control, which is a birth control product, to the pigeons. And statistics say that it can decrease the population of the pigeons fifty percent annually. Um, Aaron and I have learned a lot about their reproduction and how that works. And we believe that this may be a way to start making, uh, some progress and improvement in that arena while we work to continue to get the buildings closed up and rehabilitated that are contributing to their occupancy downtown.
Is there any kind of ordinance out there that we have or need that would prohibit people from actually feeding pigeons?
There is not, uh, at this time, other than, we do have some property, so in our nuisance violations in chapter two twenty, we do have some stuff about vermin and keeping, um, certain things that might lend to that a little, but it doesn't really.
Can we just put the word pigeon in there?
They're broad form. It might apply. I would wanna talk to Legal about that. Um, you might put that on your list to address Aaron with Legal from the nuisance part of things, um, unless Justin has a thought right off the cuff here.
Cause my thought is, is if you're feeding this birth control stuff and pigeons are eating it, but then they have a second source that they like, it's, maybe it's yumier, so you're not getting those pigeons at all.
And I think we're gonna, so we do still have, and I wanna be careful here because I appreciate every industrial business we have in our town.
Sure.
We have three feed mills or likes thereof near our downtown that are always gonna contribute to that. And so I believe that we're always gonna have something that is a little bit of interest to them. But I think that if we're positioning this specifically in the downtown where they have made homes, I think we can, along with the betterment improvement of the buildings, we can maybe make them wanna habitate somewhere else, um, instead of focusing on the downtown. Um, but I, I do think maybe we should look into what she's saying.
Yep.
So we may have a nuisance code that would apply, but I'm not sure. So we'll verify.
I will say, I think as far as, one of them in particular, M F A has been great to work with.
Absolutely.
When I reached out to him a couple of years ago, at great expense, they replaced every broken window they had.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's been the case to the neighboring property to the west. I think we're still waiting probably on them to replace fixed broken glass for some time. So I think if we find that that's not working because of that, I bet you that they would partner with us to.
Yeah.
Do whatever. It's a nuisance to them as well, right?
Our feedback from the businesses and the industrial, you know, companies have, has been very positive. And so I anticipate that we'll have any partnership that we need on some of that. Um, and the one that you specifically mentioned, we've had recent conversations with again, so.
Yeah, I think the document spoke to that too. If you target the areas where they're roosting, then they're, they're creatures of opportunity. They're not gonna fly ten times the distance to go get something that they've established, if we've established.
Right.
You know, a good place for them, so.
Yeah.
This may be off the cuff and I'm sorry, but, um, we have that sidewalk improvement, um, program available. Is it possible that we could cost out of how much like the pigeon wire stuff would be to put on top of buildings? Because that seems to be the, one of the biggest complaints with downtown buildings is all the pigeon poop on the sidewalks. So if we could prevent them from roosting along the edge to keep the sidewalks clean, it'd be kinda interesting to see how expensive that is.
It's cheap, yeah.
Is it cheap? Okay.
Yeah.
And just do like a one-time fifty-fifty split, you know, for the business owner to put that up. If something happens to it, then it's on them. But, I mean, that's just a thought to kinda get the ball rolling.
We do have some pricing on that in the research that we had done on different options. So we can, I can bring that back or we can look into a program like that.
Okay.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that, um, the ordinance that I've enforced before in other towns for the feeding situation was called supplemental feeding of wildlife, so it kinda captured deer and other. So, it kind of can capture deer and other things like that, so if somebody's trying to bait deer, uh, into their yard with corn, things like that inside the city limits, that, uh, that would, uh, re, result in an ordinance violation, so you could probably include.
Okay.
That would be a, a kind of a catch-all and not specific to pigeons, but supplemental feeding of wildlife has been an M F A enforceable ordinance in my history, so.
Great, now I can't have hummingbirds.
We do not have such an ordinance, so I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Uh, anything else on the pigeon feeders before I move on? Okay. Um, admin and hu, human resources, so all project areas of the, uh, so the disaster relief funding for the April twenty-ninth tornado, I've mentioned that to you several times, we've been having weekly meetings. Each of the areas that we've had to submit, we had to break things down, so debris removal, the building at the cemetery, because insurance didn't cover that. Um, we've had to submit separate projects for each of those. All of the projects have now been accepted by FEMA, they've been submitted and accepted, and they're in the second review. So, they've made it past the state level review, um, with our FEMA representative, and they're now at the federal level, level in that review. The next step will be that they will send us back some questions or seeking information and that kind of thing. And then we will determine how much we're going to be awarded from that, but we're still sitting on, um, because of some donated, um, so we had some volunteers that came to help with some debris pickup, and then we had Dotty Trash Service that donated some boxes for moving some larger tree pieces and trunks. Um, those in-kind services as donations, we were able to use to offset the twenty-five percent cost share. So, even though we're not applying for a grant, we're applying for funding, um, from the disaster, we still have to, twenty-five percent, we don't receive, we receive seventy-five. But the in-kind services, we're able to use to cover that twenty-five percent match, as far as it'll go, up to, I think it's twelve thousand dollars. Um, but we had almost eight thousand dollars worth of in-kind donation, so that was great for us. And it's looking like we will probably be receiving, as long as they approve everything, somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars right now. So, hoping to use that for mitigation planning and preparation for being more prepar, prepared for future storms in the event that they come. Um, C P R, A E D, and first aid training, uh, that's a mandatory training that we're requiring for all employees. And those are scheduled for this Thursday, October sixteenth, and next Thursday, October twenty-third. Um, so I think Kami's got, Kami's worked with Greg to get that put together, and just about everybody has signed up if they didn't already have their certification otherwise. So, we'll be getting all of us that, um, needed our recertification covered, as well as new employees. Uh, quick thing I wanted to touch on still from admin and human resources, just to mention to you guys, city hall is closed on Veterans Day, November eleventh, and that is a council meeting. So, typically if city hall is closed, we've canceled your meetings, I wanted to see if you guys want to reschedule, or if you have a thought on what you'd like us to do with that. And then also the second meeting in December, we typically either reschedule or cancel that meeting, based on if we need to get anything covered appropriation-wise or anything. So Kami and I just need some feedback on what you'd like to do about those two meetings, reschedule, cancel, or be here.
So, I think the December twenty-third, pretty, pretty typical that we do cancel that one, on the November eleventh, I don't know if we can make a call um, at the end of this month, if we know, to get a feel for what are, what your agenda is looking like for that.
Sure.
What it would be.
Sure.
Um, if there's a lot of time sensitive stuff on it, then I think we reschedule, but otherwise, I think we can probably, um, when does the second one in November? What day is it, Paul, is it Thanksgiving week?
It'd be the twenty-fifth, it'd be the week of Thanksgiving.
As long as it's not at risk, then I think that'd probably be okay.
So, we can kind of see how that agenda rolls, and then we can send out an email, maybe to get some consensus from you guys, as we get a little closer here, and I know what that agenda looks like, if that works for you.
My thought is, I kind of hate if it's a holiday and you guys have earned a holiday, I hate to have you work if it seem right, so.
Hundred percent. I would rather do one in the middle of November if, if we're at risk of doing, if it's falling on veterans and Thanksgiving, but. Guess it depends on, depends on the agenda.
Just do one meeting on the eighteenth, that's right in the middle between the.
Since I've been here, rescheduled the one, the week of Thanksgiving, because we're here that Wednesday after, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we're here all day.
Okay.
Guess.
I guess we can just see what's on your agenda.
Okay.
And then we may be able just to do the one, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, maybe.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, we'll just play by ear.
Tony can have my proxy vote, whatever, whatever he thinks.
So Kami and I will work through that as we get closer to having an idea of what that agenda is. Real quick, I want to touch on some paperwork that's in front of you, um, of a, you'll see pictures of a statue. Um, this is not something that really required council action, but I wanted to have a conversation with you guys about it and, uh, just kind of have some quick feedback, um, tonight or otherwise, so, uh, you can take the paperwork with you and read it. Um, basically, we have an opportunity here that's been presented to me. Um, there's a, an artist that, um, was born out of country, but then settled in Galena, Missouri, and has done lots of different artwork pieces and things like that, uh, that are displayed at Silver Dollar City Sight and Sound Theater. Um, he's really done some artistic pieces of, all across the world, um, his name is Brian Rantz. And this statue, um, that you see here has been bronzed. So, it's not a great picture, and then I show you the second picture where there's two on it, this is the fiberglass version of the same. And so he made a fiberglass version, and then a version that went to the state of Ohio to be bronzed. And the cost of it was about a hundred thousand dollars, um, and this is a statue of Lady Justice.
Okay.
And so this went, um, and there was an agreement between he and another, um, city in our region for this to be constructed, to be bronzed in Ohio, and come back and be put atop one of their public buildings. And then they chose not to do that, and so the artist had to cover the cost of that bronzing out of pocket. Um, he now is unfortunately terminally ill with cancer, and this is one of his last pieces of art that's large and cherished to him, uh, that he would like to see somewhere, um, that kind of shares his legacy and his history and his story. Uh, and he believes that Lady Justice needs a good home, and he would love to know where she's going, um, as he's finalizing his work here. So, Lady Justice currently is still in Ohio where she was bronzed, and what was proposed to me was that we consider putting her on city property somewhere, um, preferably the city hall lawn, because we are one of the only communities left in the state of Missouri that still has our municipal court in our city hall building, so, and we still have an original courthouse-style building. So, the proposal is that she be placed on the city hall lawn, she's a twelve-foot tall bronze statue. And to get her here, we just have to cover the cost of shipping, which is five thousand dollars. And one of the groups that was approached about this is willing to cover half of that. So, really what was proposed to me was that the city cover twenty-five hundred dollars to get her here, and then be willing to put the bronzed statue on the city hall lawn. We've talked about that that would need a concrete base of some kind for her to be placed on, be adhered to, so that she's not just on the ground and lawnmower blades and, you know, weed eater string and things can do any damage to her, and we'd like to work with, uh, the Boy Scouts to do a project to make a base for her if we decide to put her here on the city hall lawn. So, just wanted to let you guys know, this opportunity is in front of us. Um, it would be a, a partnership between, uh, some of the students at the school, um, the, uh, YEP class and the youth empowerment, that is youth empowerment is YEP. Um, there's another group involved there, Mrs. Mobley is the one that presented this to me.
Strength, strength, something.
No, it's not sources of strength. Thank you. Um, she's the one that pitched this to me, um, and has the connection to, uh, a friend of, a close friend of the artist. And so, basically, they're looking for a pretty quick answer, um, because he'd like to know where his statue is going to go. Um, not a budgeted item, not an amount that really requires any kind of council feedback, but I feel like it's important that I have this conversation with you guys prior to agreeing to put a bronze statue on the city hall lawn. So, just wanted to let you know about it, see what your thoughts are. If we agreed to do this, um, we have to take the fiberglass one as well, but we don't have to keep the fiberglass one, so we would be thinking about um, a donation to an art museum or something like that for interior display of the fiberglass and the bronzed statue being on display here in Aurora.
Would we be able to sell the fiberglass wood, to recoup some money?
And I don't know. Pretty rough pieces.
Okay.
It would be kind of one of those, my personal opinion from what I saw on the covers, because I sent it on the same fiberglass guy who can fix it for you.
Okay.
Because it, it is in pieces.
Okay.
Her arms are attached and something else, right?
The arms is what I vividly remember, um, not being attached on the fiberglass one, so, and the concern there would be if that's not maintained properly, uh, we wouldn't want to do damage to it, you know, so, the bronzed one would be the primary focus.
Where would you think about putting it on the, where, where in the lawn?
There's been discussion about the east side of the property somewhere, because it's pretty flat over there, and over here it's pretty sloped on the west side, so the conversation was there's kind of a tree in the way, but we have a smaller grassy area between the sidewalk and where you pull through to drop a sewer payment. There was talk about in that grassy area there, or maybe even on the southwest, southeast corner, um, because it's pretty flat over here, those were just initial thoughts.
My only comment is make sure it's on a pretty sizable pedestal, as in height, to prevent vandalism of any kind.
Yeah.
So, what do you guys think?
What's the, what's the role of the other group, besides splitting cost?
Um, so really just to preserve the history, um, she had the con, the connection to the artist initially, and then, uh, they've just asked that, since she's kind of a historian, Mrs. Mobley, that she assist in preserving his story, his legacy, and so then the goal would be for her and the students to put together, um, you know, we'd put some kind of plaque or something on there that provides a Q R code, or, you know, somewhere where you can go get to his story, his history, and the information behind the artist, so that would be their goal. Additionally, we've had some conversations with Aurora Downtown Project, some of the leadership classes at the school, um, and then just some city conversations. I would love to see us put together as kind of an activity and things to do that draws people to Aurora, um, a scavenger hunt. And so you can go to this location and see the historic Lady Justice on the city hall lawn, and then your next stop is White Park, where we have the historic, you know, whatever, we take them different places, I feel like it's a piece of art, and art is something that they want us to work towards, so that draws in some students back to the conversation, I think, about, um, just the art pieces and scavenging through Aurora to find historical artifacts, artwork, and things like that, that, um, draw people to do things and get moving in town.
Were you wondering who was supporting the other twenty-five hundred, was that your?
My thought was, um, I would rather us, uh, just pay the five and be in charge of kind of our own destiny as far as if we're putting a Q R code on, on something out on city hall, uh, we certainly could have her write and document everything for that, but for it to come to you to, to publish, where we would want someone not with city hall being in charge of a website, of the Q R code on the, on the statue, per se.
Gotcha.
You know, maintaining some type of control with what could be on there, you know, if it gotten to wrong hands, or a student, or, you know, whatever, wanted to, you know, have a sign on to put whatever they wanted to, when you click that Q R code, uh, maybe have, you know, whatever, whatever they want to write, um, you know, come to you and you publish it. So, we have control over what's the Q R code showing, not a, maybe a group of students.
Gotcha.
I did have that question, um, is this a nonprofit that's doing this, is this a business, who, who, who's?
The contributors to the funding, so it's the groups at the school, so I'm not exactly sure.
Collective of.
Yes, and then the chamber has offered to be a part of it as well. Or willing to talk about it, so.
And then, do we have, as of what this looks like to get some scale and like the finish and everything? Do they have anybody there that can go ta, take some pictures of it, send them to us?
We, I don't know the answer to that yet, but we have discussed asking for that, so that we could see some better images before we jumped in, so.
My answer would be, go for it, and if you want to do the five thousand dollars, rock on, but maybe that other donation would be for the bronze plaque.
Okay.
Just thought process, I think it's once a lifetime thing, and I think you ought to do it.
I think it's kind of a weird, unique thing, and we should do it because it's weird and unique.
Councilman Blades? Okay. Consensus to work through it then, okay. I think that's everything I had, um, in terms of my management report. Resident software demo, I wanted to mention that, so, M M L conference, I did not make connection with this group, uh, but a council member or two did. And it's a software program that would work in with our, uh, existing website, where if citizens were searching for something, or they had a question, or commented on something, um, this software could go in and pull code and legalities and things, and kind of send some answers back in real time, kind of with A I usage, um, and try to help kind of be more responsive to the community. They did reach out to me, I think maybe it was Mayor Kennedy that spoke to him at M M L, and so I do have a meeting scheduled to do a demo and kind of dig into that and learn a little more about it, and, uh, see if that might be something that would be a good fit for us to help increase some communication, so, just wanted to let you know I've scheduled it.
Kind of take the edge off of how difficult or rigid, I guess I should say, sometimes code reading can be, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, remind me what time the meeting is next week, the M M L?
Um, I believe it's twelve-thirty to two-thirty, or eleven-thirty to two-thirty. I think they're going to have a repeat there.
Got to get in the right month.
We can confirm those times, too. I think that's all for my report, unless any of you have any questions for me?
I do know.
Okay.
Right, thank you, Karen.
Sorry, it was a lot tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, I will make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to R S M O six-ten dot zero-two-one for items one, three, and thirteen.
One second.
A motion, a second, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oplinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman Blades?
Yes.
You are now on closed session.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Don't forget to survey.